If we'd all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. So, Councilmember Lydia Sepadossen is appearing remotely, and so she is present for purposes of the minutes and... I'm sorry?
So is Councilmember Tran also remotely?
Oh, Councilmember Tran is also remotely. So...
Hello, Mayor.
All right. Welcome. This past weekend, we lost a real pillar of our community, Don Miller, Lake Haven Commissioner, who many of us have known for decades. He was first elected to the Lake Haven as a Water Commissioner back in 1983, forty-two years ago, passed unexpectedly this week, just this past week. And his memorial service is scheduled for next Thursday, March 13th, at St. Vincent's Church at 11:00 a.m. That's the 13th, next Thursday, 11:00 a.m. at St. Vincent's. In honor of Commissioner Don Miller, let's have a moment of silence. Thank you. You know, he was always... He had a very wry sense of humor. He was always quick with a joke, quick with a quick saying. You know, you worked with him, and you, Council President?
He was a very unique individual. At one point, his family in Fedaway was named Family of the Year. They had a number of children, and he always had a good-natured temperament. I worked with him for many years at Lake Haven. We had many, many water sewer jokes, called them the Brown Jokes, and he always was very sincere about making sure that this was a good, family-oriented community. So, we've lost a good person.
All right. He was a true public servant and a dear friend to many in this community, including, I know, everyone up here. Okay. Now, before we get started, one of the folks that was going to give public comment, I pushed the very beginning because cake is involved. Margaret Rayner, who lives alongside Steel Lake... Well, Margaret, I'm not going to steal your thunder. She brought cake. It's in the back, and I'm going to let her explain why and her journey to the podium today. Margaret?
First of all, I'd like to say thank you, thank you, thank you to the City Council and to Mayor Farrell. If it weren't for you, this wouldn't be happening tonight. For many years, I've been an advocate for Steel Lake, and recently, I saw for-sale sign go up on the property at the west end of the lake that's at Natural Habitat Wetlands. And I sent emails, talked to a couple of you, talked to the mayor, and lo and behold, I saw a resolution had been passed to purchase the property, and then that it was a done deal. And I am just thrilled to death that this lake property is going to be preserved for people forever. You are so far-sighted in order to buy this property and keep it for future generations of Federal Way residents. So, thank you, thank you, thank you. And as a way of saying thanks, we've got cake for you from the Steel Lake residents. And I don't know if you saw the cake before it got cut, but one cake was daytime and one cake was nighttime with Steel Lake, with the trees and the lake. And it said, "Thank you, Mayor Farrell and City Council members." So, thank you, thank you, thank you. Enjoy the cake, everybody. There's lots back there.
Margaret, we want to say thank you to you for bringing it to our attention. Steel Lake is an important part of the history of Federal Way, and if you hadn't brought it to our attention, it might have slipped away from us. So, thank you so much, and thank you for all you do to keep the lake healthy.
Well, I'd like to say to everybody here in the room, one person can make a difference very easily. You just approach the right people, and the right people help you, and you've truly made a difference. So, thank you to all of you.
Thank you, Margaret. Okay. And now, let's see here. Now, we're on to Mayor's Emerging Issues and Report.
I believe Thomas is still booting it up.
Do you want to give the resolution for Mayor Yancey?
You could do...
Mayor Yancey, children are here.
There's this... No, 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 no. You could do the Robert Frost at the JFK inauguration if you want, Mr. Mayor.
Come on, hide, hide, hide. No. And go for it. You're good.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay. So, back on February 22nd, we had the annual City Council retreat, and it was a really great opportunity.
It was a great opportunity for all of us to... For the council to... For the council to talk about the future of senior staff, members of the public. And you can see, we were over there down at Dumas Bay. Dumas Bay was actually one of the facilities that we were discussing and its future and, you know, different approaches to address really what is a beautiful facility and, you know, really coming to grips with the repairs that are needed and also the future. Big thanks to all the staff, big thanks to Thomas and the IT Department. It was a flawless IT presentation, and thank you, John, for your staff and for the lunch and the breakfast, and we had, I'd say, quite a number of members of the community that showed up, and that was good. Okay. Next, myself and several members of the City Council, we head into Washington, D.C. this Sunday to attend the National League of Cities. It's the Congressional City Conference in Washington, D.C., starting on Sunday, March 9th, to Thursday, the 13th. And we'll be there meeting with our Congressman, Adam Smith, our senators, and will be... There'll be thousands of City Council members and city officials and mayors from around the nation. So, we're going to be... It's going to be a great opportunity to hear how other communities are addressing, you know, very similar issues and share ideas, share thoughts, and get to know people from around the country and reunite with people that we've gotten to know over the years. So, that's something that is going to be very much a value-added. Okay. Next, these are the things that have occurred recently. We had the Association of Washington Cities Action Days, February 19th and 20th. That's the picture on the far left. We had the Council President, Councilmember Walsh, Councilmember Honda, and myself. That's in the St. Martin's Pavilion. I know we've got... Melissa, I don't think I'd been in that room since I played a basketball game for Yellum High School against Olympia in that facility. They have built a beautiful conference center around that basketball facility in that pavilion that was really a nice, a very, very nice presentation. We had, you know, hundreds of cities from around the state that were a part of, again, of discussions, talking about, you know, whether it's, you know, city planning, you know, dealing with homelessness, housing, quite a number of issues that we were able to discuss. Yellum High School won that basketball game, by the way. Triple overtime. Just saying. Okay. So, recycling and shredding event, February 22nd. I believe that gets started about 10:00 a.m. on that day. Then we've got the multi-service center Redondo Heights opening. That's the picture where I'm raising my hand. And that really, you know, I'm raising my hand because that occurred, I believe, the very next day after that big, big storm. I don't know if you guys got woken up in the middle of the night when we had that, you know, the windstorm and the hail and the lightning, and it woke us all up. Actually, it knocked over all of our garbage cans, or very much surprised us in the middle of the night. And I use that as an analogy, is that what that multi-service center housing, and, you know, when we walked in, there were all these children there waiting on buses and really what I, you know, vet housing and the food bank and all of the support that the MSE offers at that location is very much in response to sometimes what the metaphorical storm that families and individuals face, whether it's the sudden loss and the tragic loss of a loved one, the loss of a job, an illness. Those are the kinds of things that people are dealing with. And, you know, the multi-service center is just really one of the beacons of light in our community and a real pillar that had been years that they've been working on this at Redondo Heights. And it's a beautiful facility, a beautiful meeting room. The County Executive was there, our King County Councilman, Pete Von Reichbauer, several members of the City Council, the Mayor of Des Moines, and many elected officials, and also members of the business community. It was really a very touching ceremony, a beautiful, like I said, facility and housing for people. That was on the 25th. But it does remind us that there are people in our community who are experiencing those storms, and it's incumbent upon all of us to help each other out, find ways that we can get people out of the storm and onto recovery in whatever form that they're suffering. So, there on the far right is myself and Pete Von Reichbauer in early morning the next day on February 26th. And that was, we had just recently installed the Gold Star Families plaque. It was... That's... It had been installed. Pete wanted to thank you, King County Councilmember Pete Von Reichbauer, for providing this funding. Thank you to John and Jason and the Parks team for installation. And we're going to have a dedication ceremony in the very, very near future to commemorate the Gold Star Families. And that is at our senior... Excuse me. At our Veterans Monument right there in between where the Performing Arts and Events Center is, at the top of the stairs, and then next to Town Center 3. And big thanks to Roger Flygar, who was the Chair of the Veterans Group that had assembled that were talking about how to do the monuments there. And also, you know, a big thanks again to Pete, who has been very instrumental in making sure that we recognize our veterans and Gold Star Families.
May I ask a question about that?
Yep.
Is this the $10,000 grant that Councilmember Van der Waal gave to us in 2022?
No, I think it's a... I think it... Yes. Okay.
Because we had a committee that was working on what was going to be there.
Well, I think that was three years ago. I think that... I think this is a much more recent one.
It's absolutely beautiful, but thank you.
It's a grant that was not only this part, but then to have a public event at the pack for the Gold Star Families, and that still is yet to be planned in association with King County and the committee.
Okay. Thanks.
All right. Okay. Next, we had a visit from some Japanese high school students on February 26th, and they were actually... When I... We started sitting down with them in my office and talking, I said, "Who's going to be the interpreter?" And the facilitator that was there, actually Karen Brigado was there as well, and one of the folks that was there helping to shepherd them says, "Oh, we're not going to do interpreters. They're here to speak English," and they did a great job, and we had a great conversation, and we told them about our trip to Japan a couple of years ago, and it was very nice. And then the picture at the bottom left is them over at the police department. They went over to the courts, and it was an all-around great visit from them. And then we had the Bricks and Mini Figs, Mini Figurens grand opening, Federally Ribbon Cutting on February 28th. That was a great event. I see Becca with the chamber is here, and we had several members of the City Council and very excited to see that business open up, and that's actually over there, kind of in that area behind Black Bear. And where Billy McHales is as well, sort of in between those two. Okay. And then this morning, the picture to the far right is me reading to kids at Camelot Elementary School, and it was a really... First, it was to kindergartners, then it was to third graders. And actually, I got... There was this really funny kid... The children were just adorable, and the kindergartners, you know, are always really fun, and they want to see pictures of my dog, our dog Bailey. But the third graders, boy, they brought their A-game. I had one third grader, and we were talking about the Constitution, and he had just got done reading a book about the amendments to the Constitution, and he very concisely says, "Can you even name any of the amendments to the Constitution?" And that was really cute and fun, and I was able to. So, thank goodness. Took me a second. It's like, yeah, can I? But anyway, he had just read this book, and we're just talking about what a gift reading is, and it's always so fun to see the young energy and enthusiasm. And the principal was there as well, and they've got a great staff over there at Camelot. Okay. Next, we've got upcoming events. We've got the Communities and Schools Annual Fundraiser at Evergreen Middle School. I believe that was the former Totem Middle School. That's at Evergreen Friday, this Friday, 7:30 a.m. And then we've got the Brookdale House Ribbon Cutting. That's their, I believe, their 25th anniversary. They're very excited about it. My in-laws are... Ron and Diane are there now, and they keep saying, "They say you're going to give a speech, so you better be working on it." And I say, "Yes, Ron and Diane, I'm working on it." It's a beautiful facility over there and looking forward to it, and that is really one of the great places in our community. That's at 2:30 p.m. And then we've got Meet the Mayors. That's this Saturday. American Association of University Women Branch Meeting, Christ Lutheran Church. That's just right across the street from Decatur High School, and that's at, I believe that's at 10:30 a.m. this Saturday. It says 7:00 a.m., but it actually is 10:30 a.m. Okay. And then we've got some other upcoming meetings. We've got St. Patrick's Day Flag Raising. That's a tradition. It's known... No other day other than March 17th, we'll have the Flag Raising in honor of St. Patty's Day. That'll be at 12:00 noon, and I'm sure we'll hear from Craig here in a moment, Craig Patrick, to talk about all he has in store. And then we've got... Craig, are you signed up?
I am.
You want to get up right now?
Right.
All right. First of all, I don't see any green on you, but we'll take care of that on the 17th.
I'll take a second.
All right. All right.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Farrell. Thank you, Council President, Council members. Community members, thank you very much. My name is Craig Patrick. We are going to be putting on the Flag Raising. It's going to be the seventh year in a row that we're going to be doing this. We have bagpipe players. With Party City closing down, we're having a hard time finding balloons, so what we have done is going to go with flags this year. We'll have... The face painter got a real job, so she'll be unable to attend this year, but we're going to have flags, bagpipe players. We're going to have gold coins for the kids, and I've been reaching out to the community. Some of our veterans are going to be there, our military will be there. We have Rich Finn from Hyvox or Vox Hibernate Seattle is going to be coming to speak. Karen McCann from the President of the Irish Heritage Club is going to be there, and Father Dion is going to be there to do a blessing in the morning. It's going to start at 12:00 noon. After that, we're going to head down to Kent, down to the Hart Bar for a little bit of lunch there and a pint or two, and then we'll probably be, you know, hanging out for a wee bit. No one will be driving back, maybe maneuver it. But then we'll probably head up to Billy McHales, and we're going to be honoring two community members this year. So, same thing, same routine as before. We're going to have two community members that, you know, embody the spirit of St. Patrick and have helped out the community, and we're excited for this. This has always been a fun time. I'm just looking forward to it. But, yeah, that's all.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Now, do you know... Have you talked to Steve Groom, our Finance Director, about this?
No. There's going to be... No, I have not. There's going to be a special bagpiper there this year, though. So...
Good, good. But Steve Groom is actually a talented bagpiper.
I've heard. I've heard. One of my... It was, you know, a little sidebar here. It was interesting. My friends were talking in California, recalling and saying, "Hey, there's this guy up in Fedaway. He's on IMB. He's been in some movies, and he's a bagpipe player." I'm like, "Who? Who is it?" And he's like, "Yeah, his name's Steve Groom, and he works for the City of Seattle." I'm like, "Get out of here." So, we've been doing this for seven years, and Mr. Grooms has failed to step up to the plate. So, we're going to have a special introduction for Mr. Grooms.
Whoa. Hot mic. Last year, I met Neil Hubbard at the flagpole, and I told him I hadn't played in 25 years, so he doesn't know if I can play well or not. We'll find out that day.
Where your kilt? Where your kilt?
Yeah. I'm happy someone else is going to show up other than Neil Hubbard, you know, because South King County was invited to come. It's on St. Patrick's Day. They're heading down to Olympia for their fundraisers.
Very good.
So, I'm happy to work with them as well, but this year, they won't be able to participate.
Okay.
All right.
All right. Well, thank you very much for your work on this.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Okay. And then we have the Coffee and Conversation with the Federally City Council and Federally School Board. Council President, would you like to talk about that?
You know, we've tried to get this going for years. This will be our third Coffee and Conversations with the School Board Directors and the City Council this year. Instead of being by Starbucks by Safeway, it's going to be east of the freeway, so we can bring in the people east of the freeway at Ebony and Ivory Coffee Shop. If you haven't been there, it's a beautiful coffee shop. It's over by World Vision, and so be sure to be there and bring your questions and talk to the School Board Directors and Council personally. Thank you.
Very good. Okay. Next. Then we've got the March of Diapers Drive, Saturday, March 22nd, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at Fred Meyer. Then we've got Perk Appreciation Day coming up on April 26th, 9:00 a.m. to noon. It's the Brooklake Blueberry Farm, Steel Lake Annex, and Celebration Park. And is that it? Now, we'll have Brian Davis come forward to introduce the Connections Health Solutions presentation, and we'll have a brief presentation. Brian?
All right. Thank you, Mayor. My name is Brian Davis. I do not have an IMDb page, and I do not play the bagpipes. Let's see here. Let's go to...
While you're getting that queued up, what, Steve, what movies or shows were you in?
So, I grew up in Los Angeles, and when I... And from high school on, for 25 years, I was in soundtracks. I did the soundtrack for Dead Poets Society. I was on the Joan Rivers Show. I did an MTV music video, things that a financial director doesn't want to really brag a whole lot about.
When we had, you guys, when we had the costume contest at... When we do the pumpkin carving and we have, you know, for Halloween, that's when I first became aware, because he showed up in full kilt with his bagpipe. And so, that's when the secret's out. So, anyway. Okay. Brian? So, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm here to introduce the... A team from Connections Health Solutions, who would like to make a presentation to the Council. And without getting into too much detail, I'm going to turn it over to Michael Transu, who is a representative of the group, and he's going to introduce the rest of the team who will be doing the presentation.
Well, Mr. Mayor and Council President, Coach, my name is Michael Transu, and I'm here today representing Connections Health Solutions. We've been... I've been with Connections Health Solutions about three and a half years, and I do the governmental affairs work for Connections Health Solutions in Washington State, both at the state legislative level and at the local level. We're here today because of the King County Behavioral Health Levy, which I'm hopefully hopeful that you all are familiar with, which was adopted by the voters a little while ago, and King County is now in the process of going out for an RFP on three of the centers in King County. There's one center recently in Kirkland that you all may be familiar with that Connections has had open now for just about seven months, and recently, that center was designated as the North Center for the King County Levy. That facility has five service lines, behavioral health treatment that I'm going to have somebody who's smarter than me at this introduce you to. And I'm here today with Mackenzie Barta, who's one of our development managers, and then Dr. Kyle Jasper, who's our medical director at Kirkland, just in case anybody has any technical, more medical-type questions that neither Mackenzie or I can answer. The RFP for the remaining three centers is, my words, kind of out on the street as we speak, and those RFPs for the three remaining centers are due on the 21st of this month. So, why we are here today is, as part of the RFP process, King County requires that jurisdictions within which one of these facilities is going to be located, put forward a letter of support for that facility to be located in that community. You have, I believe, in your packet, a draft letter that we have put together for your consideration, and so with that, I mean, that's the ultimate ask for us tonight. With the RFP being due on the 21st of this month, as you can well guess, time is short. So, with that, I'm going to stop and introduce Mackenzie Barta, who's one of our development managers, who's going to walk through the philosophies. The Connections Health Solutions has our start that we got in Phoenix and Tucson, where we see about 35,000 patients per year in both of those facilities. And then if you have, again, if you have any technical questions, Dr. Jasper's here, and if you have any policy or broader political questions, I appear to answer that. So, if there isn't any questions for me, I'm going to turn it over to Mackenzie, and we'll walk through the presentation.
Mayor, could I just clarify something real quick?
Yes.
So, the letter that Michael, Mr. Transu referred to is, it's not in the Council packet, but it's in the public comment portal online that both the Council and the public have access to.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
All right. Great. Thank you. Mackenzie?
Perfect. Thank you, Michael, and thank you, Mayor Farrell and Councilmembers. My name is Mackenzie Barta, and I'm a growth manager on our team at Connections Health Solutions. Connections is a dedicated behavioral health crisis care provider that is well-respected in King County. We operate a crisis center for mental health and substance use-related emergencies in Kirkland, and as Michael mentioned, that center was recently selected by King County to be the first official crisis care center in the county. Today, I will walk through some background around the King County Crisis Care Centers levy. I'll touch on our history and expertise in crisis care, provide an overview of Connections Kirkland and our services, and then end with our impact and results. So, in April 2023, King County voters approved a $1.2 billion, nine-year property tax levy that will create a county-wide network of five crisis care centers, four for adults and one for youth. The four adult crisis care centers will be distributed geographically in four crisis response zones, as you can see on the map. One of those centers will be located in the South Crisis Response Zone, where the City of Federal Way is located. Each of these crisis care centers will provide no wrong-door access to crisis services in multiple levels of care that include a behavioral health urgent care for youth and adults, a 23-hour observation unit, and a crisis stabilization unit. King County is currently in the process of procuring the operators for the first two new-site crisis care center proposals, and those are due March 21st. As a requirement of the RFP, potential operators must include a letter of jurisdictional support from the permitting jurisdiction with which they seek to cite a behavioral health crisis center. We are submitting a proposal to operate the crisis care center in the South Crisis Response Zone and have identified an ideal property in the City of Federal Way that was formerly built out for behavioral health services, never opened, that we think is an ideal property in order to open these behavioral health crisis services. So, to meet the requirements of the RFP, as Michael mentioned, we're here to request jurisdictional support. We believe that we would be a trusted partner and provider to operate the crisis care center in the South Crisis Response Zone because we have over 15 years of experience providing crisis services in other regions across the country. Through our psychiatrists, who founded the company over 30 years ago, we have even additional experience providing crisis services. They pioneered the 23-hour observation level of care in the 1990s, which has become to be the backbone of crisis services and crisis systems across the country today. Our mission is to provide immediate care to people in mental health or substance use-related crises and connect them to long-term support within their community. We provide 24/7 walk-in access to anyone experiencing a crisis of any kind, and we also offer a diversion for law enforcement and other first responders to bring individuals in crisis. We ultimately deliver a positive impact to individuals. We take the strain off of local resources, and we make communities safer by providing a dedicated place for people to go when they need care. Our goal is ultimately to provide a high-quality, cost-effective, and safer alternative to emergency departments and jails for individuals with behavioral health needs. Our model has been recognized by SAMSA and the National Council for Mental Well-Being as a national best practice in crisis care and is guided by four key principles that we never violate. The first is that we provide access for all. We provide no wrong-door access to crisis care, and we accept 100% of individuals that come to our door. We understand that anyone can experience a crisis and that it looks different for everyone, so we provide a warm and welcoming everyone, so we provide a warm and welcoming place for people to get the care they need, and we never turn anyone away. Second, we believe in least restrictive care. What we mean by that is that we believe people can recover, they can get better, and not everyone needs an impatient level of care. We provide immediate and intensive treatment and stabilization and are able to stabilize and discharge the majority of individuals over the course of 24 hours, helping them get healthier and back to their communities faster while avoiding more restrictive levels of care. Third, we create connections in community. Our founders named us Connections Health Solutions for a reason. Our goal is not just to stabilize individuals while they're in our care, but to coordinate across the delivery system and connect to ongoing resources in the community so they can maintain that stability once they walk out our doors. We begin case management immediately to ensure that everyone has a safe plan in place upon discharge that includes both transportation and long-term supports in the community. We also schedule appointments at discharge, and we follow up with individuals to see if they attended that appointment or need additional support. And lastly, and most importantly, we focus on safety. Safety is deeply embedded in everything we do, the way that we design our centers, staff our centers, provide care and treatment and discharge plan. Our centers are staffed with highly qualified personnel that are trained in behavioral health care. We also design our centers to ensure complete line of sight for all individuals in our care and monitor the interior and exterior of our building 24/7. And as I mentioned, we also connect to care and follow-up to ensure that all individuals get back to their communities safely. We live these values every single day at our centers, including at Connections Kirkland. In August 2024, we opened a comprehensive crisis center in North King County after almost two years of partnership with five North King County cities, including Bothell, Kenmore, Kirkland, Lake Forest Park, and Shoreline, to bring this resource to their community. Connections Kirkland has multiple levels of care in line with King County's crisis care centers levy model and offers a safe and therapeutic place for anyone to access care. Individuals can either walk in our front door with a family member, friend, or natural support, or they can be dropped off at our dedicated first responder entrance by law enforcement, fire, EMS, or other first responders. Our vision is ultimately to transform the way that behavioral health care is delivered. So we designed Connections Kirkland to be a state-of-the-art center where anyone would feel comfortable accessing care, similar to a primary care clinic. And in February, Connections Kirkland was awarded as the first official crisis care center in the county, which demonstrates our capability, commitment, and expertise to providing crisis care to this community. Connections has multiple levels of care. The first is our 24/7 behavioral health urgent care, which provides 24/7 walk-in immediate access to behavioral health care without the need for an appointment or a referral. You can think of it similar to a physical health urgent care. Instead of waiting hours at an emergency department or potentially weeks or months to access an outpatient behavioral health care appointment, individuals can walk into our urgent care and see a behavioral health medical provider, so an MD and peer PA, within 90 minutes. They'll also see a case manager for a psychosocial assessment focused on the social determinants of health. The majority of individuals that access our urgent care services are able to be discharged back to the community after about a two-hour outpatient clinic visit, but if they do need a higher level of care, they can be admitted to our 23-hour observation unit. Our 23-hour observation unit provides rapid assessment, intensive treatment, and immediate stabilization over the course of 24 hours. Individuals are admitted to a comfortable recliner chair in an open and therapeutic milieu where they're engaged by our interdisciplinary team of behavioral health medical providers, nursing staff, case managers, behavioral health specialists, and peer support specialists over the course of that 24 hours. Individuals can access our 23-hour observation unit by walking in our front door and going through our urgent care, or they can be dropped off at our dedicated first responder entrance. We have a separate, secure, discreet first responder entrance that allows for law enforcement, fire, EMS, and others to drop individuals off in crisis as an alternative to the emergency department or jail. We accept 100% of law enforcement drop-offs, and we never turn anyone away. The majority of folks that access our urgent care 23-hour observation services are able to be stabilized and discharged back to the community with a comprehensive plan in place after 24 hours. But for those who do need additional time, we have a co-located crisis stabilization unit which provides bed-based continued stabilization services. Individuals are admitted to a bed in this unit where they receive continued treatment from the same interdisciplinary team, facilitating continuity of care and minimizing the potential trauma that may come from having to retell your story over and over again if you're transferred to another facility. And lastly, all individuals receive access to post-crisis follow-up care. We have a comprehensive process that ensures that everyone has the supports that they need upon discharge and are able to safely get back to their community. That includes identifying a disposition option for them, whether that's back to their home, to a group home, a shelter, or another level of care, and we focus on care coordination with that disposition option. We also coordinate or provide transportation if needed via non-emergency medical transport or ride-share services, and if they're going to another level of care, we provide a warm handoff to the receiving service provider. We also follow up post-discharge with all individuals to ensure they're attending outpatient appointments, they understand their medication, and they have the supports that they need to be stable in the community. These services work together to serve as really an unequivocal front door to the behavioral health care system that's able to accept everyone at all times and maximize available resources in the community to connect to further care. Our goal is to provide these same services in Federal Way. To wrap up, I'll touch briefly on our outcomes. We have decades of experience providing these services that we provide in Kirkland, in Arizona, and in other areas of the country. We have proven outcomes that have set the standard for crisis care, and we track a number of metrics across all of our centers to ensure that we're staying true to our values and providing high-quality care. So up to 70% of those we serve are stabilized in 24 hours and returned to the community with a plan for ongoing support in place. We also serve involuntary individuals. So of those that come to us on some sort of involuntary hold, over 60% are able to be converted to a voluntary status over the course of their stay. This is important to us because it means they're able to be active participants in their care and maintain their autonomy throughout, which we believe leads to better outcomes. I've talked a lot about our focus on comprehensive and intensive care coordination, which is evidenced by the fact that over 90% of those we serve attend a seven-day outpatient behavioral health follow-up appointment, and our readmission rates to Connections remain low at less than 3%. So we really aren't just stabilizing people while they're in our care, but they are maintaining that stability in the community and not just cycling through our services or others. Our first responder drop-off time is less than 10 minutes, and over 2/3 or almost 2/3 of those we see are dropped off by first responders. It's important to us that we make that drop-off quick, easy, efficient, so that our first responder partners are able to get back out on the street doing their job and what they're called to do, which is protect and serve. And lastly, around 64% of those we serve have co-occurring substance use disorder, which I mentioned because mental health and substance use are often seen as kind of two separate things, and often services for both of those can be bifurcated. We really try to remove barriers to access to care, and as such, we provide co-occurring mental health and substance use disorder treatment. We ultimately want to bring our model and these outcomes to the South Crisis Response Zone and to the city of Federal Way, and we believe that will provide a no-wrong-door place to go for individuals in crisis, reducing the burden on strained local resources and ultimately making the community safer for everyone. So with that, I will open up for questions, or, Michael, if you have any comments.
You know, before I turn it over to council questions, let me just say that it was anticipated that we would let the public hear about this, the council get this presentation, and then prior to the council voting on either, you know, support or a letter, I think it would be important for everybody to be able to come back a second time. So that's... And the 18th is our next council meeting, which will be several days. I just want to... I know it's close, but I want to make sure we hear from the public, we hear from the council, and we have some... Be able to answer some questions. Council President and then Councilmember Honda.
Well, thank you. I absolutely am thrilled that you're choosing... I assume you're choosing REI, where that one company nearby?
Yes, that is the building that we've chosen to...
And how many beds?
...ideal location.
Thank you. How many beds did it have?
So we would have 16 crisis stabilization beds and 16 23-hour observation chairs, as well as urgent care services.
Yeah, we've been asking for something like that for so long. I'm glad you're using Michael Transu. I worked with him in the legislature. He's a wonderful man, very decent, so that tells me that you're good people. So, you're welcome, Michael. So if somebody has dropped off and they need further care, how is that paid? Who pays for it?
So, a lot of it is Medicaid, and it depends on if somebody is Medicaid eligible. If they're not Medicaid eligible and they don't have insurance, they will run through the Behavioral Health Administrative Service Organizations, or BHASO. And as you all probably know, King County is its own BHASO. So... And then we bill any live service that is out there in terms of insurance and private pay as well. So we do a pretty good job of trying to get after, you know, as much as we can in terms of reimbursements.
And I would also add that that is the purpose of the King County Crisis Care Centers levy, is to pay for these services at the designated crisis care centers across the county. So we accept everyone regardless of insurance status, whether they're uninsured or what insurance they have.
So at some point, I understand that people always say it has to be voluntary. Somebody has to want to be helped. Do you... What happens if they just walk out the door?
I can walk out.
So you're a doctor, correct?
I'm a doctor, yes, correct. So I think there's a couple things. So we do accept patients that are brought to us involuntarily. So there are mental health laws in the state of Washington that allow peace officers to involuntarily detain a patient who they believe is having a mental health crisis to our 23-hour observation unit for the purpose of us allowing a sufficient time to do a full psychiatric evaluation and assessment to determine if they meet... If we believe they meet the criteria for further involuntary treatment. If we... We're allowed to keep someone in our facility for a sufficient amount of time since that we do that evaluation. If we believe that someone meets the criteria for involuntary detainment, we'll petition the county-designated crisis responder, or DCR, to do that evaluation, determine if they meet the criteria of the mental health laws of Washington. And that's a very tightly regulated process through these laws, through the, what's called the Involuntary Treatment Act. If someone... If we determine that we don't think that they meet those criteria, we will discharge them if they... If we feel that they don't meet that criteria and they're a voluntary patient. But, you know, we accept patients who are voluntary or involuntary all the time.
Thank you.
Councilmember Honda?
Thank you. Thank you very much for being here, and you are indeed what we need here in Federal Way and the South County area. So if someone were to come to you for substance abuse, and let's say the police have dropped them off, they're there for 23 hours and 59 minutes, do you immediately, at that point, get them into a longer-term treatment facility for substance abuse, if they need that?
Yeah, I mean, it's everything... Every patient that gets evaluated gets a, you know, an individualized treatment plan, I would say. So certainly, there are patients that would benefit from longer-term residential substance abuse treatment that we could certainly coordinate care with. I think when patients are coming to us typically, they usually come to us either intoxicated on a substance or in withdrawal from a substance. As part of the Crisis Care Center levy, we will actually have a... As part of our crisis stabilization unit, it will be dual-licensed as what's referred to as an American Society of Addiction Medicine Level 3.7 facility, which is essentially a licensed detox facility. So that'll allow patients to withdraw from substances safely and allow them to receive evidence-based treatment with medications to assist in withdrawal. We already do that even before we had this... Even before we received the Crisis Care Center levy funding, we're already providing that service. So we would treat them, get them through detoxification, which means treating of withdrawal symptoms, and then determining what further treatment they would require. So if that is residential treatment, we'll coordinate, trying to get them into a residential treatment program. If they can be... If they can engage in substance use disorder treatment as an outpatient, we'll recommend outpatient treatment resources as well.
So are there facilities in this area for substance use treatment?
There are... You mean in King?
Well, in Federal Way, South King County area, that you could have someone go to?
We would... We would work to develop relationships with those facilities that we could ultimately refer them to. I'm not a... I don't know exactly what's around this area specifically that would be like a substance use treatment in South King County per se, but I do know that these facilities are pretty common throughout King County in general.
And the only thing I would add is, as we opened up Kirkland, we spent a goodly amount of time reaching out to all of those providers, law enforcement, first responders, all of the different types of treatment modalities that you could think of in that area, so that we have a good, you know, bucket of folks to refer people to.
So the police could, or fire, or the first responders could drop someone off if they... Instead of taking them to the ER, would you provide... Or I don't even know if they need training as to determine if someone needed to go to the ER or could go to your facility?
Yeah, that's a really good question. That's a really good question. So prior to when we opened in Kirkland, our medical leadership team at Connections had worked with King County EMS's medical team to determine inclusion criteria, meaning what medical, you know, vital sign parameters, or what other medical conditions are appropriate such that if they deem someone is having a mental health crisis and they have... They meet these medical criteria, this would be an appropriate person to bring to us versus, you know, if they're having, you know, really severe high blood pressure, or really elevated heart rate, or they are... There's something wrong with their respiratory status such that they need oxygen, that would be an appropriate person to bring to the emergency room because they need further medical care. Regardless, we'll take every patient that EMS brings to us, even if we determine that they, right from the door, they don't meet the medical criteria, but at that point, we'll work to transfer them to the emergency room so they can get that appropriate medical attention, with the ultimate goal of having them come back to us after they've been stabilized in the emergency room.
Okay. And if we... So a letter of support, if it's done on March 18th, is that too late? You seemed concerned when the mayor mentioned that.
It's really close. I mean, with the levy being... With the RFPs being due three days later, that doesn't give us much time to adjust our RFP if the city decided not to submit that letter of support. So we would have three days to readjust and, you know, have to readjust our RFP submittal if the city does not provide that letter of support for us.
One other question. So if this is located here in Federal Way, do, let's say, if Auburn PD has someone that fits your criteria, could they come here?
Yes.
So all of South King County could come here?
Yes.
What happens if you're full? If you have too many people and not enough space?
You can do the...
You know, we don't have a hard upper limit, and what I would say is that if we're getting really full and our... If it looks like it's, you know, backing up, so to speak, we would actively be starting to try to, you know, prioritize treatment planning and trying to work, how can we discharge people that are, you know, getting closer to ready to leave so we can make sure that there's, you know, adequate room to take the people that are, you know, waiting to come in, essentially. But we would never turn anyone away. We would act... We would figure it out.
And is there an age? Do you have to be 18?
You have to be 18, but we don't have an upper limit on age, no.
So if you're younger than 18 and they came to you, what would you do?
Yeah, so I can caveat that slightly. As a part of the King County Crisis Care Centers model, the urgent care component of these services would serve both adults and youth. So anyone of any age could walk in our front door and receive access to services, but those units that they could potentially be admitted to, the 23-hour observation unit and the crisis stabilization unit, are for adults only. So a youth could come into our urgent care, we would see them, we would do an assessment and an evaluation. If they need a higher level of care, we would work to coordinate that elsewhere.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember McDaniel and then Councilmember Dovey.
Yeah, I'm going to start off with that last question. If it was elsewhere, where would youth be sent?
You know, I think we'd work with our local emergency room partners to determine what would be the most appropriate disposition for them if they needed a higher level of care. So we would talk to local ERs and maybe coordinate with Seattle Children's if necessary.
Okay. That wasn't even my question, but I'm curious now on that one, youth. So it sounds like detoxing or providing beds and facilities for over 18 is easily accessible? It sounds like there's not really a model for anything under 18, then?
So King County will create, as a part of this crisis care centers model, one designated crisis care center for youth. So as a part of this RFP process they have out right now, proposers could submit to operate that crisis care center for youth. So once something were to come up and running for adults in South County, the hope is that there would also be that youth crisis care center up and running, so anyone that walks in to one of the adult... So, anyone that walks in to one of the adult and youth urgent cares at an adult center could then be transferred to that youth crisis care center if needed.
Okay. And then, um, I had the pleasure of having you guys' presentation beforehand, so I know a little bit about it, but I've got a, a couple of questions that I want to drill down to some of the questions that we didn't have time to talk about or didn't pop up till afterwards. Uh, the first one, as you just mentioned, a council, is the council providing a letter the only thing, only way to do this, or is there any other options?
The, the levy talks about a letter. Um, I mean, the, your old local government guy talks about a resolution from the city council that might be appropriate as well, but the levy talks about a letter. Um, so, and it's, from our perspective, the contents of either a resolution or a letter, the contents just need to be what is referenced in the RFP that needs to be culled out, um, in the letter. Um, and, which is why I think, you know, at least asking a little bit, um, on a, you know, from my perspective, um, from our perspective, uh, not waiting until the 18th would be important. I know we need to have some public input, uh, but it really cuts it short for us. And, uh, the letter that, I'm trying to think, Brian, exactly where that's at?
Uh, so, on the, uh, website, uh, it's available to, under public comment.
We all got emails of it.
Yeah, so they have access to it.
So, that, that lays out kind of the draft requirements of what the RFP submittal requires. So, uh, that's certainly a, a letter that is appropriate. You could also take that letter and roll it into a resolution. But again, you know, cautious about waiting until the 18th because that really does push us right up to the window.
Gotcha. And it needs to come from council, it sounds like, then?
Um, I don't think it needs to come from council. I think one of the things that, uh, I've talked about is a motion from the council authorizing the mayor to sign the letter that we've submitted in substantially that form, um, which may be another option for you all to consider.
Okay. Um, so, my first question is going to be on the police drop-offs. When we had the conversation online about this one, it was, uh, pretty obvious that police have a special drop-off location for it, but the moment the police drop it off, the police are gone, and they do not do pickups. Uh, I need a little bit more details on that. It sounded like police are to be not seen or heard at your guys' facility. Is that kind of the, 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 the status?
Yeah, I mean, our, yeah, I was just, yeah, I mean, our, our goal is to, to, I think, you know, communicate with the police, get as much of a information about what they observed and what they saw, but then get them basically back out as quickly as, as they can. We never call police back to our facility to manage, um, you know, any behaviors or emergencies. I mean, I mean, the, the goal is to get them back out into the community.
Gotcha. And then with that said, uh, one of the questions was, if the person is, is, uh, going to be going to jail, are they, uh, they do not come to you guys at all, then? The only time that someone would be picked up is if they would be, then dropped off to you from, by the police is if they were going to be dropped off at the ER, correct?
I, I think it, I think it depends. Yeah, I mean, I think that there, there can be observed mental health crises in the midst of, of, you know, what the police may be determining to be a crime, and they may, at the police discretion, decide to bring them to us because they feel that the mental health crisis is overwhelming versus the need to book them into jail.
Understood.
So, we don't, we don't argue with the police about where they should be going.
All right. But if that's that kind of situation, then how do you then connect with the police for that next step, if that person is going to be incarcerated, then?
Yeah, I mean, I think if we had determined that there really is not a mental health crisis that warrants further treatment, if it became apparent in, I think, the evaluation of the patient that there was still this pressing legal matter that needed to be addressed, we would get in touch with the police and figure out what they want to do next.
Gotcha. That, my next follow-up on that one is security. What kind of security will you guys' facility have?
So, we manage all of our own safety and security through our dedicated behavioral health staff, so specifically our behavioral health specialists. All of our staff are trained in verbal de-escalation, safe hands-on de-escalation techniques. We believe that we are the best people to be managing the security and safety of our units because we're highly, highly trained, um, in caring for people in behavioral health crisis. That being said, we have an external security officer in one place in our facility, and that's at our front door, so not in any of our units, but just to screen individuals as they're coming in to our center to ensure they don't have weapons or anything that might harm staff or patients while they're in our center. But other than that, we manage kind of all of our own safety and security.
Okay. Uh, my next question is going to go onto the treatment. Uh, the conversation we had, and it was kind of one of those things you educated me on, was the 23-hour cutoff, or not quite to 24. Uh, my understanding, if it's under the 24, it's going to fall underneath the funding that you currently have. If it goes over 24, is that when it goes into the Medicaid, uh, potential need?
Uh, so, the simple answer is that all three of these levels of care will be covered via the same funding source, which is the King County Crisis Care Centers levy, in addition to Medicaid funding. So, that will be the same across all three of these.
Okay. Well, in your current understanding, will there be any need for any capital coming from the city for either capital improvements or ongoing services?
No. The King County levy covers the capital side of things as well.
And the ongoing, too?
Yes.
Just want to make sure. I just made sure verbally, thank you. Um, and the next one is, is going on to the drop-offs. A concern that I have, some security and some police that I've talked to on this one, is becoming a dumping ground, to an extent. That's the term we use, uh, used a lot. If someone is dropped off from another physical location, let's say Kent or Auburn or something like that, when they get discharged, uh, one of the comments was, is we, you guys actually make sure they go back to the location they came from. How does that look, then? If someone does come in from Auburn or Kent and they get drop-off by PD, how does that, uh, person then get, uh, brought back to their community?
Yeah, so, um, as part of the psychosocial assessment that's done by our case manager, we'll determine, you know, what the living situation is or where they should return to following, um, the completion of the treatment with us, you know, whether that's at the 23-hour observation unit or after they've been admitted to the crisis stabilization, you know, if that's indicated. Um, you know, we use a variety of transportation methods. Um, I mean, if, sometimes if they, if there's a qualifying mental health diagnosis, we can have medicated funded transport. Um, we do have, uh, we pay for lifts, um, we often use bus passes, so, um, you know, I think in the future, maybe as part of the levy funding, we also would, uh, have our own transportation service that we could utilize as well. So, we, but the thing that, I think, that really distinguishes us versus, you know, other hospitals, we just, we don't discharge to the street.
Yeah.
So, we have.
It's a big concern, which is why I'm glad you stated that.
Yeah, no, we.
Well, hold on. That, they're not under arrest. You don't have law enforcement. So, if somebody wanted to be released and walk out the front door, what's stopping them?
You know, I mean, if, if someone wanted to believe, I, I mean, if, if they did not meet the criteria for involuntary mental health treatment, we can't stop them from walking out the front door.
Okay.
Thank you for clarity. Um, the second part of that one is housing. So, let's say they do stay, they go past the 24, they do have a couple of days of treatment, because I do know you guys have a detox, uh, aspect of it. What is the current housing situation that we'd be able to use in this area, then? If we were to open, I mean, I know it's going to take six, 12, nine months to, whatever, to open up, but is there any current housing scenario that we have set up in this area that would be, uh, in the, the next stage for you guys?
Yeah, I just don't think, uh, Councilmember McDaniel, I don't think we've had time to, you know, look at that. We will do, um, as I mentioned, we will do our due diligence like we did in Kirkland, and, you know, once we get closer to the RFP, um, and get awarded the RFP, hopefully that is something that we will, uh, be very diligent about, and again, something we worked really hard on in Kirkland. And I think if you were to call, uh, up to Kirkland and talk to the mayor or the city council members, you would find, uh, that we did a really good job of reaching out to the community and finding those treatment services, those housing, uh, services that are out there for folks who are being discharged.
Gotcha. I only got two more for you. Uh, the next one is ongoing daily services. I do know there's some places like Valley City who actually have patients come back on a daily basis. Does your guys' model have anything like that?
Yeah, right now, we don't have any, like, kind of scheduled outpatient treatment that Valley Cities does have. I mean, someone could theoretically walk into the urgent care every day to be evaluated, but that wouldn't be a prescribed treatment plan that we'd recommend.
Okay. And then the last one is probably the big one, it's not always spoken about, is we have a, a day center that currently has sometimes issues if you drive by late at night or in the afternoon. Uh, that is a big concern that anybody sitting up here is going to have, is if that starts to creep over into that area, too. So, a lot of my questions or considerations to making sure that if we do provide you guys with the ability to, to try to open this up, that it doesn't turn into something that's going to bite us back. So, I appreciate you guys actually coming down and discussing this with us today. Thank you.
And, uh, Councilmember, I did talk to them about that, and, and making sure that there was a situational awareness of what we've got going on, and, and, so, thank you. Um, okay, uh, Councilmember Dovey, then Councilmember Walsh.
Could you refresh me? How long have you been open in Kirkland?
Uh, seven months next week.
And how many months did it take from start to finish to get open the, I mean, when you got the okay that we're going to go to Kirkland, what was the prep time to open the doors?
Our initial conversations with the North King County cities were in the summer of 2022, and we ended up opening in the summer of 2024. Um, a lot of that, as this was not through an RFP process at that time, was us kind of engaging with those five cities, engaging with community members, making the plan for this. So, once we started construction, it was probably less than a year.
Would that be the same process down here if we grant the letter, which to me makes sense to do? But what would be your timeline from the day of, let's say you're awarded the RFP? So, we're looking, what, a year out before you would, your doors would be open?
Yeah, and they're not awarding the RFP until this summer. So, after that, it would probably be a little bit over a year, a year and a half.
And, and how many square feet do you actually occupy?
So, in Kirkland, we have a bit of a larger footprint. Um, we have 45,000 square feet. This building that we're looking at in Federal Way has around 25,000.
So, if you have 25, you're looking here and 45 up there, is, uh, it's going to be scaled down, then? And, I mean, is there a reason you wouldn't look for 45, or is it just the, the marketplace?
So, we have a, we have a bit ex, of extra space in, in Kirkland that's not necessarily needed. We got a little bit lucky in that regard, just in terms of the building that we were able to find. We also have one additional unit in Kirkland. We have a 16-bed evaluation and treatment unit that we would not seek to do here, and our 23-hour observation unit is a bit larger there as well.
And how long is the RFP? If you win the RFP, what's the timeline? I mean, are you open, are you committed for 10 years, five years, 20 years, or what's?
So, as a part of the RFP, the, the selected operators would be committed for 50 years.
So, if you win the RFP, if this council supports it, you win the RFP, and you're going to build a 25,000-square-foot facility, or maybe have more space to grow as needs are for 50 years. Is that correct?
That's correct. Our goal is ultimately to establish something here or wherever we establish something that is a long-lasting piece of infrastructure in the community that grows with community needs and that, and it suits the needs for years to come.
And the facility you've talked about were, that you might, that might be available now, if that falls through, then you would be looking for another facility. Is that kind of the?
That's correct. We've, we've done an extensive real estate search. We have a real estate partner that could continue that search if needed.
I see. Okay. Okay, and then, uh, that's my only question. Now, how many employees does your facility, uh, maintain?
150 right now.
150?
Yeah.
Okay. In, in Kirkland?
In Kirkland.
And you anticipate the same amount here?
It'd be smaller, just because we have, it would be, it's smaller services.
20,000 square feet less, maybe 70, 80, is that kind of the ratio, or?
I think that's a, a good estimate on the spot.
Okay, good. Thank, thank you very much.
And it's important to remember that facility is bigger, has more chairs in it, and so the facility here is smaller and wouldn't have as many 23-hour observation chairs, so your FTE count would go down.
And, and the reason it's smaller here is because of the way the RFP is with the county, or not? The, the needs got to be the same here as somewhere else, I would assume.
It is, but the reason it's smaller is because the building exists, and we would have to do a remodel. We wouldn't construct our own building.
Okay, okay. But if there was a 45,000-square-foot building somewhere, maybe?
We're all theirs.
We're all theirs. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Walsh and the council president.
Yeah, uh, just a, a couple of questions. One is, uh, Councilmember McDaniel was very thorough in his, in his questions, and so it doesn't leave many questions. But one thing that, that was asked was, uh, you know, if, if somebody walked out. In Kirkland, at that clinic, how often does somebody walk out?
It's, it's extremely unusual. I could probably count it on one hand in, you know, the seven months that we've been open. And I think the thing I would also say, too, is like, part of our model is, we, we're very, we're very well-staffed with our model, and part of our model includes, um, peers with lived experience. So, if someone's, you know, part of that, we, we have, um, techniques to obviously de-escalate a patient and specific training about that. But I also think, too, that we, utilizing peers with lived experience, continuous re-engagement with providers, which happens, um, you know, numerous times over a 23-hour observation period, we're able to really engage with a patient, kind of try to determine what are their needs, why did they actually come in, or what was their reason that they brought in, and really trying to get at what, what do they need right now to kind of help alleviate this mental health crisis? And I think that level of engagement and re-engagement, it's so different than what happens for a patient with a behavioral health crisis in the emergency room. Very often, you know, I, before I was the medical director here, I was a, I was an emergency room psychiatrist in Salt Lake City, Utah, in a downtown urban hospital. And there were so many patients that were just left in gurneys in, in the emergency room and just ignored for 12, 14 hours at a time. That doesn't happen here. There's, there's such a high, um, staff-to-patient ratio that we're really able to get, drill down pretty closely at what the patient needs, and I think that, you know, the patients are pretty satisfied with the services they get. So, even if they're, even if they don't, you know, even if they're having the worst day of their life, which very often is the case in a crisis center, we can really try to get what their needs are such that I think that's the reason why no one really just wants to pick up and leave and run out the door.
Thank you.
Sure.
Just one, uh, more question. This may not be so much for you, but, but for mayor, the mayor, perhaps legal. But what about the possibility of, you know, you're on a timeframe crunch for that, that, uh, you know, something from, from the city. Uh, would it be practical for the mayor to just independently, as the mayor, uh, sign a letter?
I could have.
Then, and then?
I could have.
Okay.
But I didn't think it was appro, I, I'll, go ahead and finish, and then.
And then, uh, on the, on the 21st, on our, or the 18th, when our next meeting is, the council will go ahead and do a resolution as a follow-up to that letter that the mayor could already sent. You know, ju, just, you know, it, would that be something that would be amenable to people?
I, number one, I could have, and I, I could have sent the, you know, done the letter on my own. But I did not have a comfort level because of the, I, I want to make sure the public, uh, was informed. I, I know that there are a number of, I mean, a great number of people concerned in, in this immediate area with what's happening at the day center. I was concerned about walkaways. I was concerned, you know, the chief and I, I have, have a, a couple of concerns. So, um, I thought it was more, more appropriate to, um, and actually, in consultation with Michael, uh, transu, um, I, you know, I, there was a request to bring it before the full city council, and instead of, instead of doing the other way and saying no, uh, on, unilaterally on my side, we're here before the council because I wanted to make sure the public and the council had an opportunity to view this. But I, you know, I'm, I've got, I've got some concerns, and, and I want to make sure that, that we do justice to the community that we serve in regard to notice.
Yeah. Hopefully, this evening, we'll have some, some public comment on, on it as well, and have a better measure of that. So, all right, then. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, council president?
Well, thank you, and that is what I was going to talk about. We, we're between a rock and a hard place. We, we need treatment facilities, but what we're finding is that with the day center, it brought people here from other cities, and I think there are people from other states that came to Seattle and then got sent here. And so, we don't want to be a magnet for, that, we want to take care of our people. We want to take, but you're a small facility, 16 people. If you fill up with people from other cities, that still leaves us in the lurch. And then, I, so, when you have people, the police bringing people to you, is that just our police, any police? How do they get referred?
Well, this is a King County facility, so it would be, I mean, in Kirkland, we're taking, uh, drop-offs from other cities around, you know, Kirkland, uh, because it is a King County levy. So, we would accept folks from Auburn, and I don't, from my perspective, I don't see us as a neighbor like a day center. I think you've heard a lot of testimony and a lot of, uh, constructive discussion here about how and why Connections Health Solutions is not that. And to the extent, you know, we, um, you know, accept folks from out of the city of Federal Way, I think you've heard that we will do our due diligence to provide them the right treatment, provide them, uh, the right community care, and have them, uh, make certain that they get back to the community as much they can.
Sure. So, so we're going to be concerned with people who are going to be loitering or hanging around, or, you know? So, and sometimes they'll hang around because they want to get drugs or whatever. I don't know, you know?
Yeah, I don't think we've seen that in either of our facilities, in either Tucson and Phoenix, and I don't think we've seen that at all in the Kirkland facility. I would just say, we are, I think, from a behavioral health treatment perspective, Connections Health Solutions is the type of neighbor and the type of operator you want in your community because of the things that I think are talked about in terms of loitering, leaving, uh, being able to hang out. I just don't think would occur around our facility.
Yeah, and I would also just add with that, these are all valid concerns, and they're concerns that we heard from the city of Kirkland and surrounding cities when we were working with them to open this center there. And I think if you talk to them, I think now, a lot of their concerns would be kind of fully alleviated. If you were to drive by our Kirkland center, I don't think you would even know that it's a Kirkland crisis. a Kirkland Crisis Care Center, a Crisis Response Center. It's very discreet. There's not individuals loitering outside. It's kind of set back in an office park setting. And I just urge you to, you know, drive by, talk to city partners in Kirkland and other cities, because these are, these are concerns we discussed with them as well.
All right. Councilmember DeBby?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment. I don't view this as a homeless center like the Day Center. This is a crisis center that anybody from any walk of life is going to need and would use. And I think it'd be a great asset to have in our community. And I don't, I mean, I'm going to advocate that, I don't know if we can vote on it tonight and say no, we got to wait. But, I mean, if, if the, this is a decision point, and I don't know if we can let this just string on until the eighteenth, because they got a lot to do. And if we're going to make a decision, we should either decide yea or nay and get on with it.
Right.
So, procedurally, this is not on the agenda as an action item? So, it was presented as a presentation, so no vote? Going back to the mayor's point of notice to the public, it would, it's kind of a bait and switch. So, it cannot be voted on tonight. We could do it on the eighteenth. And then, the mayor does have the option to execute a letter if he so chooses.
Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Honda?
Thank you. When Kirkland opened, were the police and fire hesitant to bring people there?
You've got to work today.
The question was whether, were they hesitant to bring people there? I wouldn't say they were hesitant. I would say that there was a, there was a longstanding policy of, of always using EMS to transport patients who are in a behavioral health crisis, even if that crisis is identified by the police. We worked very closely with Kirkland's police department to, to change that policy, such that they can transport patients who are having mental health crisis directly in like a police car, which is done in other states, like where we were founded, in Phoenix and in Tucson. And the, the feedback has been overwhelmingly positive from that police department. The other thing I think I would say too is, both myself and my counterpart, who's the senior vice president of operations, who kind of oversees the non, the non-physician staff, we meet regularly with local police, fire, EMS providers. We do, you know, if, we do monthly meetings of quality improvement, but we also, in between meetings, we probably speak to them at least, you know, three or four times a week about cases that we've seen, things that we can improve upon, things that went well. So, there's a constant back and forth dialogue with these agencies. And we really do look at them as partners and not just, you know, customers.
Are weapons and drugs allowed in the facility?
No.
So, if someone comes in with either one of those, you remove them?
We remove them, yeah. So, everyone gets searched, everyone gets, you know, wanded with a magnetometer, other belongings get searched and inventoried. You know, if they had, you know, knives, we would dispose of them. If they had a firearm, we'd contact the local police department. If they'd have drugs, we'd dispose of them.
Okay. I agree with the other council members that we should move as quickly as possible to support this. Would individual letters from council members be of value to you, or just the letter signed by the mayor?
I think, I think it would be better coming from the mayor. I think, you know, if you look at, you know, the council versus the executive, legislative versus the executive, I think individual letters, you know, might not be as well-received as a, you know, letter from the mayor. They could probably be most appropriate. You know, we had the conversation a little bit ago about the mayor being authorized, you know, to do this without, you know, regard to a council action. So, you know, again, for our purposes, I think the letter from the mayor would be most appropriate. And, you know, short of that, a resolution of some sort from the council. But again, that pushes us right up to that eighteenth, which is really tight timeframe for us on a three-day turnaround.
So, if the mayor were to agree to, on his own, to sign this before the next meeting on the eighteenth, we could still do a resolution on the eighteenth showing that council supports it? We're getting pink slips from people as you're speaking, so I think that the public here will be speaking to this.
Great.
But, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember McDaniel?
Yeah. I know eighteenth is tight, but is it impossible?
I mean, if it's a, if it's a, if it's a no in Federal Way, we don't have, I don't think anything in the hip pocket to, you know, propose another facility in the South End unless I'm, is that right, Mackenzie?
Yeah, we'd have to change the majority, a good, good part of our proposal.
Gotcha. No, I totally understand, and I know we have a great location, which makes this thing a sweetheart deal. But the eighteenth is in my mind going to be the closest for a council. I mean, they've just pretty much admitted that there's no way we can vote on it today. I think you have enough votes for it up here. But the big concern is, is the whole process. There's a gentleman, Karen Stark, that I want to talk to beforehand to make sure he has his input on this too. There's a lot of people in this city that I want to have their input. This is a massive move. And of course, coming on the heels of what's going on with the Day Center, it's, it's a big deal. So, I think you have the support up here, but I will not push anything faster than the eighteenth, just for the respect of the people who live in the city. And then, my other question, nothing with you guys, what is our legal recourse if this goes sideways and it turns out to be like the Day Center?
Ryan?
Well, it's going to be a county facility run by the county. So, you can complain to your elected representatives at the county.
They don't care. So, there's no, there's nothing else that we have?
Your legal recourse is to take it up with your elected officials.
There's no, nothing falls into the permitting or anything?
I mean, if it's a public nuisance and they're violating our local ordinances on nuisance laws, yeah, we could enforce those.
We've got that little, little.
I doubt that's going to be the case.
Gotcha. All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yeah, I, I would say, I, I believe that you'll have the council support. I mean, I, I'm looking forward to any comments that, that people have today on, on it. But I would, you know, in my opinion, on the eighteenth, we should, as a council, pass the resolution. And I would encourage the mayor, in the meantime, to go ahead and, and send a letter of support would be my encouragement to the mayor.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Sepha Dawson, I can't see whether you've raised your hand on the screen. Did you want to say anything?
No, I did not raise my hand, but I do support the project because people have been asking, I believe, at least to get some kind of a solution for the problem that we have with the Day Center. So, at least this will take care of people who are addicted. So, I think it's, it's a great way to get something in place in support of our, the request that has been happening. And not doing anything also is not helpful. So, I fully support this, and I've been involved in conversations with them also. So, I, and I've heard this even with Kent and prior to the, not Kent, I'm sorry, Kirkland and prior to that too. So, I, I really think it's a great move. Too bad that it's, what, a sixteen-bed, but that's what we have, so we'll go with what's there. But I fully support, and I think we should move forward with that. And I just actually support councilmember Walsh's proposal for the mayor to move ahead so we, you know, we can give them that confidence to move, to go forward with what they're proposing and still vote on it on the eighteenth.
Michael?
Yeah, just a couple, just a couple of things.
Thank you, councilmember Sepha Dawson.
The RFP still has to be scored. Just because we submit the RFP doesn't mean we're going to get it. So, I mean, understand that. And, you know, the other thing I wanted to talk about is the city and being a regular partner and somebody who we at Connections would regularly engage in and with in terms of the operation of the facility. So, I mean, I can envision Connections and you and your city staff getting together, you know, every couple of weeks, you know, just for updates, you know, seeing how things are going, hearing any, you know, community concerns that ought to be out there, that could be out there. I think you're looking at just a hugely willing partner and willing to work with you. And again, I think if you were to call the city of Kirkland or reach out to the mayors of Kent, Auburn, or Renton, you would find that Connections is a wonderful partner and somebody who, as near as I can tell, everybody's willing to work with. And I think from the Kirkland, Kirkland facility standpoint, has shown that we can be a good neighbor and a great operator.
All right. Thank you. All right. Anything else on this? All right, you, you folks gave a great presentation. It went a little bit longer than we anticipated, but thank you. And I, perhaps I would encourage you to wait for a public comment. But the, council, is it, can I get your unanimous consent here to skip public comment to get to the presentation? We've got some folks waiting. So, can we?
Yeah.
Is it okay with you guys? Okay. All right. Hearing objection, we'll go, move on to item five. We're going to get to public comment, but we want to make sure we get to this. We've got a proclamation for Women's History Month. I'll turn it over to councilmember Honda.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, president, council president, Coach Mark as well. Go ahead.
Every March, we do this presentat, this proclamation for Women's History Month. And I would say that in, in Federal Way, we are one of, we are a city that we have many, many women who are not only involved in politics, but they're very involved in business, in our churches, leaders in our schools. And you don't see that in other places around the country. I serve on several boards throughout the country with other city councils. And there are some councils where there might be one woman, or there are councils with all men. You know, it's more common than not. And we have always had a lot of women participants in our elected field here in Federal, Federal Way, from the school board to the city council. In fact, our first mayor, when we incorporated, was a mayor, was, was a woman. And I think that speaks volumes about how Federal Way has been leading, leading the country sometimes, I think, in showing that women can, can do what they need to do to make cities run, to make schools run, to make business run. And so, tonight, we're doing a proclamation, and we have some very special guests here. And I'll go ahead and let council president speak, and then we'll read the proclamation. Councilmember Sepha Dawson will also be reading the proclamation. She was unfortunate, unfortunately not able to be here in person tonight, but she wants to be involved, as she should. So, go ahead.
Thank you very much, councilmember. So, Jill and Laura, would you come to the podium, please?
And Becca Martin is here too.
All three of you are here? There we go. Oh, Becca's coming. Okay. We had one other daughter for, but she's not here, I guess, huh?
No, our older sister is not here.
Oh, thank you. All right. So, I'm going to take you with a little trip down memory lane here. February twenty-eighth, nineteen ninety, this city incorporated. And the, it took about three, three times maybe before we incorporated, before we had the vote to incorporate, to become a city. I was on the Federal Way Community Council prior to that with Mary Ann Mitchell. And I was on the Federal Way Incorporation Committee with Mary Ann Mitchell. I was secretary. Mary Ann was the lead. And the Lake Haven Commissioner, who just passed away, Lake Haven Utility District donated their typewriter that I was working on to the fire station for the first city hall. I'm talking about a typewriter, you know? Nothing, nothing electronic, just a typewriter. But, so that's how the city got started. This city is now thirty-five years old, as of this February twenty-eighth, ninth, twenty-two five. And we would not be here like this if it were not for their mother. So, Jill and Laura, thank you very much for sharing your mother with us. We had very many meetings. The last day of the vote for incorporation was actually, it was March third, nineteen, let's see, nineteen, nineteen eighty-nine was the vote. And then, we actually incorporated February twenty-eighth. But on the day of the, the vote, I was running from the meeting to Lake Haven to go to work, which I had to, I had thought I had applied at the city, but there wasn't the city. It was a water sewer district, but that was fine. And broke my leg. So, I can say I gave my leg for the city, not an arm, but just a leg. But if you want to see who the people were that were at the incorporation party that night, while I was in the hospital, they're all listed on a, out in front, when you come up the stairs, there's a, a photo of the people who signed that incorporation. And the city was actually, in the beginning, was run by the Chamber, so Becca, the, the Federal Way Chamber of Commerce. We used to meet at Coco's in the back, which is now Black Bear Diner. It has a back room, and that's where they all met. And that's how we all transpired to where we are today. And the reason we did this is because the county was allowing streets to be formed in the city that, in our, on incorporated area, that went nowhere. A lot of cul-de-sacs in Twin Lakes that go nowhere. And so, the very first thing we did, and not only that, they would go, people, developers would go into the county and ask to develop a project and ask for, you know, twenty apartments, and then they turned into two hundred apartments. And so, then traffic got really bad. So, that's why we incorporated. And, and here we are today, all these thirty-five years later, trying to make this into a place where we're proud to call our homes. So, thank you very much for being a part of this. And now, we're going to read the resolution.
Yeah.
And councilmember Honda's going to start, and councilmember Sepha Dawson is going to join in.
We may be a young city, but we have a long history here in South King County as Federal Way. So, this is a proclamation. Whereas throughout our history, women have fought tirelessly to further our democracy's reach and help with progress towards a more perfect union. Through protest and activism, generations of women have advocated for the values and character of our nation and? Your turn.
Whereas, Jill? Whereas women of every race, class, socioeconomic, and ethnic background have seen as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social and legislative change movement and have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation. And, I'm sorry. In countless recorded and unrecorded ways, including as trailblazers in science, the arts, education, business, social services, nonprofits, and government at all levels. And?
That's you now.
Your turn.
Whereas women have played and continue to play critical economic, cultural, and social roles in every sphere of the life of the nation by constituting a significant portion of the workforce, working inside and outside of the home. And?
Whereas women have served our country courageously in military conflicts and?
Whereas women were particularly important in the establishment of early charitable, philanthropic, and cultural institutions in our nation, and continue to fill a majority of roles in these fields. And? Whereas women have been leaders, not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, and to create a more fair and just society for all.
Now, therefore, we, the undersigned mayor and city council members of the city of Federal Way, do hereby proclaim March twenty-twenty-five as Women's History Month. And we invite all citizens to learn more about the generations of women who have left an enduring legacy on our nation's history, signed this fourth day of March twenty-twenty-five. And we will come down and present these proclamations to Becca Martin, who is the CEO of the Chamber of Commerce, and the lovely daughters of Michelle.
Laura and Jill.
Laura and Jill, I'm sorry. I met you before, and I am so bad with names sometimes. We appreciate your, that you're here.
So, Laura Littler and Jill Snyder, correct? So, and what I neglected to say was that Mary Ann tragically passed away, goodness, probably what?
Twenty-two years ago.
Thank you very much. And she was one of our first state, female state representatives from this area. And the overpass over Peaslee Canyon into Three Twentieth is named after her. And Mitchell Place, across from the multi-service center, is named after Mary Ann.
We'll just have to get some after.
I would just like to say thank you to Linda and the council for honoring and remembering our mom. She was quite an amazing lady. As I mentioned, it's been 22 years in December, and I miss her every day still. But she, she did a lot of amazing things, and it's a lot to live up to for us. So we appreciate you all, and I'm sorry you missed the party. It was a good one. Thank you, everyone.
I just want to, on behalf of the business community at the Chamber, thank you very much for recognizing the powerhouse that is the women leadership in the business community here in Federal Way. I think it's particularly fun that we mentioned today that it was the Chamber that was here before the city, and that leadership brought a city here. It brought a hospital here. And to Susan's point, it is unusual to have so many women in positions of leadership in one city, working every day. But I just want to leave with this thought, whether you're in business, and no matter what walk of life you may be at as a woman, you are in a leadership position. We move mountains, we create cities, and we can make a difference every day. The time to lead is now. Don't be afraid to step up if you're a woman. We have an ecosystem, we're here to support you, and thank you for recognizing that history as we look to what we can do in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Also, I told the girls that would be a good name for a rock group.
Exactly.
The Lovely Daughters.
Exactly. Now, don't forget, there's cake in the back. We're, the time is getting away from us. We were going to break, but we just need to, we need to press forward. We've got people that have filled out pink sheets, so it is now that time to hear from the public, the most important thing we do, and the most important part of our meeting. So you've got three minutes, unless you're speaking for five or more people, and everyone knows the rules, green means go, yellow means you've got 30 seconds, red means please stop. All right, I'll call a couple of folks, and let's queue toward the back. First, we'll have Harold Booker, then Jeffrey Tencredi, and then Michelle Valco.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name's Harold Booker. I've been a resident of Federal Way going on 60 years. The reason I wanted to speak to the public today was to thank the, I grew up on Steel Lake, and I really wanted to thank the council for saving the lagoon. There are very few items left in this city untouched from the 60s. And the lagoon was a place where we swam and chased and had a great time growing up, and I appreciate the council's support for that. Second topic now, the presentation from connections. I'm a member of the Board of Therapeutic Health Services, which is a industry-leading behavioral health clinic. Our closest location's going to be in Kent, but we're up and down Puget Sound, and this was one of the best presentations I've heard in quite a while. I've heard a number of presentations over the years, being on the board since 2017, and being aware of our challenges. A critical care unit, that crisis unit, is not something that all of our behavioral healths do. Very few of them do. It's the emergency, and we, we try and handle the ongoing care. That space for that crisis is really, and being able to stabilize those, those patients, to be able to bring them to that next phase, that is hard work. From everything I've heard, and I've heard about the Kirkland Clinic for a couple of years, as you guys were getting set up, as we were talking about the challenges and the issues, they approached it strongly, they approached it openly, and they worked strongly with the community. Have heard nothing about the concerns that you folks were mentioning about loitering and things going on outside the event. They seem to run a very tight ship. And I, as a member of the community, I would support and appreciate the work that they do. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Harold. Jeffrey Tencredi. And then Michelle.
Good evening, Mayor, Council President, and Councilmembers. Good to see you. Yes, Federal Way, yes, I'm a resident of Federal Way for about 30 years. So Mayor and Council, I wanted to talk a little bit about the Federalway Public Schools. There is a crisis over there. There's a couple of issues I wanted to bring up. The discipline problem, students being held accountable for their actions. It's a serious problem in the Federalway Public Schools. Another issue that is of concern, has been of concern, is minority students are failing in the public schools, particularly African Americans. This is year after year after year. This goes on all the time. I've submitted suggestions, recommendations to the superintendent and the president of the school board. They're not interested. They just, they don't want to engage in how can we reverse those low test scores for minority students? I've brought it up to our three state representatives. I asked them the question, there's witnesses in the room. I asked, two years ago, I asked our representatives, what are you, what are you going to do to reverse the low test scores? They're not interested. But our representatives are more interested in sponsoring legislation that allows students to leave home if they're 12, 13, 14 years old. A student can run away from home without telling their parents, go to a safe house, and start the process of changing their sex, changing their gender. Students are allowed to, if they feel, if a boy feels like a girl, he can go into the girl's bathroom. This is the priority of our legislature. I've decided to submit a formal complaint with the Civil Rights Division at the Attorney General of the United States Office. You can't have two-thirds of one race failing in the public schools every single year. It's not acceptable. And in this state where one party controls the legislature, the governorship, I thought that the Democrat Party cared about African Americans. But they're more interested in sexualizing children down to the kindergarten level. That is a fact. It's woven into the curriculum. They're very clever about how they do it. More interested in doing that, and indoctrination than they are about reversing low test scores for minority students. Now, to be fair, I brought it up to the last administration in the White House. They weren't interested. But this administration, I've gotten a second email from them. So it's unfortunate, but it is a real problem, and it has to be dealt with. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Michelle Valco. And then, Michelle, as you make your way up, I'll announce the next three. Phil Meyer, Melissa Hamilton, and Dan Larson.
Hi, good evening. Thank you, Mayor Farrell, and Councilmembers, for letting me speak. My name is Michelle Valco, and I moved to Federal Way one year ago, almost exactly. And a good part of that reason was your access to outdoorsing. And for outdoorsing, for me, started with mountain biking, and then it segued into road cycling, gravel cycling, cross-country skiing, trail running, hiking, despite really not liking to walk, which is weird. But anyhow, so just a little bit about me and my story to mountain biking is, six years ago, I lost 50 pounds, and I needed to exercise, I needed to move my body, I needed, but, but more so, I needed to mentally progress. I, I was struggling, and so, but I owned a business, I'm a mother, and so I found mountain biking. And through mountain biking, I was able to become, I volunteer all the time, I build trails, I maintain trails. I'm a certified sawyer for the National Forest Service through Evergreen Mountain Bikes. So I, I found someplace in my community. And so when I moved here to Federal Way one year ago, I instantly found community at Dash Point State Park. I clean their trails up, I, I run on those trails, and it's just a place where you can be a part of something, but you can find yourself. And so Federal Way has a need right now for a few miles of, of new trail system. And so we are here to encourage you to look at Panther Lake, and let us encourage you to work with Evergreen Mountain Bike Alliance. They are a not-for-profit, and they have a proven plan that they sent over to your Parks Department to help you build that. And it was, if I remember, was a fraction of the cost of what other people may have been recommending for you. And so as a new member of your community, you know, please consider it, and yeah, that's it. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle. Michelle, I'm going to have John, was John Hutton here, or is he in the back? We'll have somebody from Parks reach, reach out to you, the director.
Great, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, Phil Meyer.
Greetings, Councilmembers, and Mayor Farrell, and the community members. My name is Phil Meyer, and I'm the owner-operator of Phil's Bike Shop, which I've been operating here in Federal Way for 25 years, I've seen Jack there. Today, I'm here to talk to you about parks, bikes, trails, and the benefits that can be gained by developing and promoting a bike trail network within a city park, specifically Panther Lake Park, which is being proposed for development by the Evergreen Mountain Bike Alliance in conjunction with the Federalway Parks Department. Evergreen Mountain Bike Alliance is the largest statewide trail-building association in the United States, and it has a long history of successfully working with all stakeholders when planning and constructing projects. I believe we're fortunate to have an opportunity to partner with Evergreen on a Panther Lake project to make our community and our parks a better place, and these are my reasons why. Trails provide health benefits. Mountain biking is a healthy recreation, and participants enjoy improved personal health and enhanced quality of life. Bicycling in any form helps with the obvious physical benefits by putting the body in motion, but studies have shown that cycling does wonders for your mental health as well. Gym memberships may be popular, but mountain biking is actually an experience that people will look forward to. Trails provide safety benefits. Creating mountain bike trails has an important positive impact on the environment by directing usage to specific corridors. Opening the outdoors for exploration and increasing overall safety for all trail users, well-designed trails provide a safe and accessible place for hikers and bikers of all ages to enjoy a controlled environment with rewarding features designed to minimize impact on the land and instill trail etiquette and minimize conflict with other trail users. By creating mountain bike trails in our open spaces, we are claiming ownership of the woods. By our presence in these woods, we are collectively increasing safety for all. I have been in these woods surrounding Panther Lake many times, and on more than one occasion, I have happened upon signs of squatters camps, discarded propane tanks, abandoned tents, piles of garbage, that all stopped me in my tracks and made me go a different way. I felt vulnerable and alone on this trail, yet this open-spaced land belongs to the city, belongs to the community at large, and we should not be afraid to use it. Squatters camps typically do not move in areas that have steady usage, so by having more people in the woods and more eyes on the land, trail users are more likely to feel a responsibility to report any misuses of it. Established trail networks mark a stamp of community intention and protection. These are our woods, these are our trails, we're going to embrace them, and we're going to defend them. Trails also provide economic benefits. Newly-created trail networks attract visitors from the local community, but once established, they attract visitors from near and far. This trail tourism draws visitors to our community, and with each visitor, we increase the likelihood of money being spent at our local businesses right here in Federal Way. Trails are good for businesses and for the city, but they are also good for individual homeowners. Access to outdoor recreation is an important factor when selecting a home, and homes near popular trail networks typically see an increased valuation of anywhere from 3% to 5%. Well-designed trails with neighborhood access that maintain resident privacy are a highly sought-after asset. Good trails are a desired amenity, and just like good schools, good parks, good transit, and low crime, that amenity offers a higher home valuation. Trails build community engagement. Trails bring people together, and local trails often become a valued hub of community activity. Trails provide a space where people from all walks of life can come together and share their love for the outdoors. This is especially true with the mountain bike community, because it's unique, as it's known, to reliably provide more hours of volunteer work support than any other outdoor user group. As our city expands, our population wants more, more access to parks and more access to trails. Land and funding for parks development is limited, so investing in land that is already within the parks' network is the preferred course of action. Development of the Panther Lake Trail Network is a great opportunity for the city, for the local businesses, and for the residents of Federal Way. Myself and many others believe we need more trails closer to home and more trails in our city. Park planning and community building is intentional, and just like the intention to maintain balance while riding a bicycle, you can't just sit still and watch the world go by.
Thank you, Phil.
You have, one last line, sorry, sir. You have to keep moving with your feet on the pedals, your hands on the bars, your eyes on the horizon. Let's move forward together with a balanced trail plan for Panther Lake Park by including it within the parks' recreation open spaces plans. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Phil. Okay, Melissa Hamilton.
Hello, Mayor Farrell, City Council President Coach Mar, and council and community. I am here just to thank the council, as part of the Steel Lake community, for the purchase of the lagoon property. That's not an official name, by the way, that's just what we call it, because it feels like a little lagoon when you take a kayak through there. But also, I want to thank the mayor for doing that story, because it was a great story, and it's allowed the community just to know about that green space. And due to Margaret Rayner's advocacy over many, many years, that property will now be enjoyed by many generations to come. In fact, when I moved onto the lake a few years ago, Margaret Rayner was one of the first neighbors that I met, and she wasn't just stopping by to say hello, she wanted me to sign a petition to save the lagoon. So she is a real asset to this community, and I just want to give her all the kudos in the world for the advocacy that she's done, especially during Women's History Month. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Melissa. Dan Larson. And after Dan, we've got Anna Patrick and Betty Taylor.
Dan Larson from Family Life Church and Family Life Center, Building Healthy Families in Northwest here. I'm reading this from Shelley Pauls. She is amazing servant to the city for decades. And so this is from We Love Our City. Last year, We Love Our City hosted our first bike safety event, Bike Rodeo. In preparation, we discovered the wonderful biking community in our area, the City of Federal Way Police, Fire Department, Marine View Presbyterian, Bikes for Kids, King County, and lots of other volunteers jumped in to provide loner bikes, bike repairs, free helmets, and a bike giveaway. The support was outstanding last year, and we're excited to do it again this summer. We are in the planning process and want to add pop-up safety events, schools, Federalway Farmers Markets, et cetera, along with the main event again in July. We will add water safety, distributing free life jackets, window, window safety and bike safety, including electric bikes. On this journey, we're also discovered that the City of Auburn is miles ahead of our Parks Department with an amazing bike park, trails, and free bike, bike safety classes offered Tuesday evenings during the summer. Cedar Lane's Bike Park Pump Track is well-done and provides a safe place for families to ride together. Prior to our event last summer, we were one of the only communities in our area that did not host some type of bike rodeo event. We all know the benefits of kids getting out and riding bikes, but we want to be safe, and we simply need more spaces for this to happen. Partnering with the bike community and our city is an absolute win, and we believe we need to pursue growing the relationship and space immediately. We all, we are all committed to the safety and health of the children in our community. This is one very tangible way to accomplish this. Shelley Pauls, We Love Our City Coordinator. Thank you, Mayor and City Council.
Thank you, Dan. And thank you to Shelley. Okay, Anna Patrick. And then Betty.
Evening, Mayor and Council. I'm a resident of Federal Way since, I don't know, 19, it's been a while, 30 years. And so I'm just going to comment on the connections. Thank you for the presentation. And I wrote down some questions, comments that I'd just like to share, and I'm hoping that, I appreciate your giving it time to put some thought into it, be really thoughtful about it. Our community desperately needs this type of service, as do other communities. But I think it's important to be really thoughtful about where it's located and realistic about how this is going to play out in Federal Way. And I am very glad that you shared all of the concerns that I heard tonight. I have some additional thoughts. I caught my ear when I heard the word disposition. I'd be curious to know what the disposition data is, if you can get any data from... is, if you can get any data from the facility to really examine and look at a lot of different sets of data, because a lot of times, we get just a little bit and just enough to sell it. And we have a trust issue with King County, and this is a King County facility, and I have a lot of issues with King County, as you know. And so, King County houses more people in crisis in Federal Way than any other area in South King County currently, and we've just celebrated more of that this week. And so, the question, the problem is, we have a lower tax base, and what happens when the money runs out, we are looking at tightening up budgets, who's going to pick up the tab? And certainly, Federal Way is not set up for that, and currently at least. And we definitely have strained services, and this is a need. Substance use disorder was mentioned, that's a huge one in Federal Way. Low barrier caught my ear, and that is what King County does. And also, why aren't we putting it this, why are we putting it in Federal Way? Why does King County always choose Federal Way? Or maybe they're putting that RFP out, and this is what's being looked at. And it seems to be rushed. And what other metrics, least restrictive environment, really caught my ear, that's very concerning. And check the 911 data, I saw the reviews online. It looks like the, most of them were from patients, that provides a good picture, a lot of different things. Has anyone asked the school district, police, and fire about this? And how much time is this gonna take for the staff, the city, if we're gonna be meeting regularly? And I guess that's it. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Anna. All right, Betty Taylor.
Good evening. Good evening, council and members, the public. So I'm gonna speak about a subject that has hit my home. Okay, okay. So I wanna find out if anyone, if anyone ever has you, have you ever been scammed? Have you ever been targeted in a scam? So, and I say this because lately, I've just been targeted. I've been like, serious, this ain't no joke. This is a joke. It's, this is, how do people, how do people, oh, God, it's, I've just been getting these like letters in the mail from like maybe the hospitals saying that my email was compromised or something else was compromised. Recently, I got a letter from the Federal Way School District saying that there was a leak. And so what the Federal Way School District offered was to set people up with a monitoring, credit monitoring service. So I've heard about people getting targeted, but it's never happened to me. And so the process of trying to, you have to, you have to deal with your, the credit, the three credit bureaus, and there's certain steps that you have to take. And this, I don't know if it's ever happened to anybody else, but it's no fun. It's not fun at all. And I think that there should be, me being a senior citizen, it should be some kind of protection. Where is the protection for people who target? Where is the protection? I mean, it's a feeling, you feel like you're in a boat by yourself. So I don't know if this has ever happened to anyone else, or I don't even know, excuse me, everybody have any insight or whatever, but it's just, it's just not fun. It's just not fun at all. And I think that, I don't know, something should be done to people who do this, to individuals that target, the hackers. How do they do this? Anyway, I know this is not your everyday topic, but I'm just saying, it's no fun.
Betty, thank you for letting us know this. And what I'm gonna do is have, actually, I was either gonna have, actually, Commander, could you talk to Betty for a few minutes? And see if we've got any, you know, maybe she's got some emails or some information we could look at in regard to possible fraud. And Betty, just so you know, there are a lot of us up here have received phone calls, emails, you know, letters that are bogus. We all, we all get targeted. And, you know, and it's really, let's find out what's going on. In your situation, the commander will talk to you, and we'll see if we can, you know, figure out the email addresses and that kind of thing. Okay? Thank you so much for talking to us about it. Okay, we are now, we've completed public comment. We're now on item six, which is the Council Committee and Regional Committees' report. And I do want, Mackenzie and Michael, thank you very much for coming. And since we've, you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but I don't think you're gonna see here any more public comment on this. So thank you very much for your advocacy. All right, let's talk tomorrow. And thank you, Mackenzie, great job. Okay, now, Council Committee reports. Here we go. Parks, Recreation, Human Services, Public Safety, Councilmember Walsh.
All right. We are not having a committee meeting this month, since we'll be in DC. Our next committee meeting will be April 8. I, just one quick comment about parks. I mean, if John's here or whatever, I mean, some of the comments about the bikes, trails, and things like that, you know, perhaps with working on the pros plan, now's the time to, to at least, you know, put those in possible plans for the future. And that is my report.
All right, thank you very much. I'll talk to John about that. Boy, every time I'm looking for John back there, I don't, he's probably, yeah, he is on the move. Well, we'll pin him down, we'll talk to him about this. Thank you very much, Councilmember. Okay, Land Use and Transportation, Councilmember Doby.
Yeah, we had our land use meeting last night, and we'll see some things coming forward on the next council meeting after everybody gets back from DC. And our next park, our next land use meeting is actually on April 1. We're gonna have, any surprises, hopefully?
That's no joke.
No joke. But we did pass out of committee the asphalt overlay plan for this coming summer, so that'll be something that will be up to vote finally on next meeting.
Very good. All right, thank you very much. Okay, Finance, Economic Development, Regional Affairs Committee, Councilmember McDaniel.
Yeah. FedRec met on February 25. We have 10 items from that meeting that are gonna be on consent agenda tonight, items B through K. Our next FedRec meeting will be March 25 at 5:00 PM in the Council Hall. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, Councilmember Asafad Dawson.
Thank you, Mayor. Our committee is now full. We did appoint new members at our last council meeting. And our meeting for March has been canceled due to our trip to DC, and then we'll look at meeting in April. On a completely different subject, though, I just wanted to talk a little bit about the Financial Leadership Workshop with Muir Alvolante, and it's gonna start on March 6, which is tomorrow. So they're gonna have a four-week session, March 6 through the 27th, from 5 to 3:30, I believe. So we just, you know, this is something in the works that has been, and so having the partnership with them, and it's open for 25 people, and we also have daycare provided. So this is something we've talked about, and it's in tandem with what we're doing with the A.R. Ramsey Program. So I'm excited about this project because it serves our Hispanic population. So looking forward to the start of this program and our project, and we'll see how it goes. So just wanted to add that before I get off. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much. Regional Committees' report, Councilmember Hunden.
Thank you. For the council, AWC has information online about the National Legal Cities Conference coming up, if you're interested. They have their schedule of what they're doing and information on how you can be most effective in Washington, DC. So it's interesting to look at if you're interested. AWC City Action Days that we attended, we were able to meet with Senator Wilson and had, we had like 20 minutes in there, more than the 15 that we were allowed. Our lobbyist was with us, which was a great help that he was there with us. And we were able to leave materials for Representative Taylor and Reeves. We were not able to have meetings with them, but we left information for them. I recently attended a focus group with the Chamber of Commerce on healthcare in Federal Way. And as a former registered nurse and former member of the King County Board of Health, it was interesting to hear other people's viewpoint about healthcare here in Federal Way and how we can improve it and what is needed in other people's eyes. And tomorrow, no, Thursday, I'll be reading at Camelot Elementary. I'm not sure what I'm reading and what grade levels I'm reading, but I know that the kids are really excited when people come in to read to them that they don't know, and they can get you to read two or three books when the teacher says only one, and you just keep reading because it's fun. The 2025 Senior Health and Resource Fair is Thursday, May 15, from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM at the Federal Way Performing Arts and Events Center. It's free. And our sponsors are Steel Lake Presbyterian Church, Virginia Mason, Franciscan Healthcare, the Federal Way Mayor, and MSC. And Vicki Chenoweth is also one of our main sponsors. This is our third year, and it's an amazing resource for anyone who is going to be a senior one day, and hopefully, that's where we all get to be. And if you have a senior in your life, or if you're helping someone who's a senior, there's a lot of information there. We have, I believe, over 60 tables and vendors right now, and we're looking for more. But it is, it's an amazing resource, and the Senior Commission is working really hard to make this successful. The other two have been very, very successful, so we expect this to be as successful. So please come Thursday, May 15, from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM, and it'll be a good use of your time. Thank you.
Council President report.
Well, I'll speak for Councilmember Betran, who got kicked off the Internet, it dropped. But March 25 is the next Finance Committee meeting at 5 o'clock. Just want to tell you about Bricks and Minifigs, sounds like a funny name over by Billy McHale's. It's a used Legos, new and used Legos. Now, you think, well, what's that? Well, if you're an engineer, like my son-in-law, it's a big deal with engineers. He has a build, besides kids, he has a whole attic full of buildings with a train, all made out of Legos. But part of my family actually has started the store, and we went, we went into the store on Sunday and for one of the grand openings, and it's very busy. And by the way, the back of the room, they have a place where you can have a birthday party for kids. They go in and have cake and build Legos. But you can buy and trade Legos. And who knew there was such a thing? But all these little bins filled with Legos, you can go in there. So we're in the store, my son-in-law, the engineer, isn't feeling well, and my daughter, the registered nurse, says, well, what's wrong? He points to where it hurts, and she says, oh, appendix. So along with the opening of the store, we had an appendectomy for my son-in-law. So at any rate, that will always be ingrained in my mind with the Legos. But if you get a chance, stop by the store. It's a wonderful new addition to Federal Way.
All right. Okay, now we're on to the consent agenda. These items have gone through committee, can be passed all at once. After I read them, I'll ask if a councilmember wants an item pulled for separate consideration. Item A, minutes for the February 18, 2025 Regular and Special Meeting Minutes, February 22, 2025 Annual Retreat Summer Minutes. Item B, the monthly financial report for December of 2024. C, the AP vouchers, 11625 through 21525, payroll vouchers, 1125 through 13125. Item D, Honra Wee Garden Boring Project Acceptance. Item E, Honra Wee Garden Bench Purchase Authorization. Item F, Authorization to Purchase Indoor Furnishings, Fixtures, and Equipment for the Joint Operations and Maintenance Facility. Item G, Historical Society Minimum Random Understanding, MOU Amendment Three. H, Inova Architects Amendment Number Two, Federal Way Community Center Locker Room Renovations. Item I, Authorization to Award and Contract for Computer Room Air Conditioning Units. Item J, the 2025 to 26 Police Service Agreement, MGP 11, Roman numeral 11, Commons West LLC. And item K, the 2025 to 2026 Police Service Agreement, MGP, Roman numeral 11, Commons, Federal Way LLC. Council, are there any items you would pull for separate consideration? Councilmember McDaniel?
G and H, please.
G and H. All right. Anyone else, council? All right, Council President?
Thank you, Mayor. I move approval of the items A through F and I through K.
Is there a second? There's been a motion, a second. For those aforementioned items, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, those matters passed unanimously. Item F, unanimously, I should say. Item, excuse me, item G, Historical Society MOU Amendment Number Three. Councilmember McDaniel?
I just need to recuse myself from the vote on that one.
Oh, very good, okay. Councilmember, Council President, would you?
Thank you, Mayor. I move approval of items G and H.
Oh, actually, we'll go back. Are both of those, I'm sorry, did you need to recuse on H, too?
Not H. H is a different subject.
H is different.
Okay, I move approval of item G.
There's been a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Matters passed unanimously. Item H.
Item H, the only thing on that one is, that came through Parks, and it's about the remodel. I know we've asked, but I wanted to publicly make sure we know that, let the public know that we're gonna have an update on the cost of the locker room repair. So I just wanted to make sure that people knew that that's, it's a parked meeting, people don't show up to it all the time, so I wanted to make sure they knew about that.
Very good.
That's it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead.
I move approval of item H.
Second.
There's been a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Let me, let me just ask real quick, in regard to locker room renovation and making sure that, John, how are we gonna make sure that that's transparent, that we get that out there? Should we maybe have a report to the full city council about that?
Yes, we committed, we're happy to do a report to the full council, and we committed already to do a report at the next Parks Committee meeting.
Let's do that. Let's follow up. Stephanie, would you please note the follow-up from that Parks Committee meeting? I think the good councilmember here makes a very good point. This is a longstanding project. First, we did the pool, then we did the slide, now we're doing the locker rooms. Let's make sure this gets calendared, and we'll put this on for, it's not gonna be business, but it will be maybe a presentation after public comment at the next meeting. Is that, will that?
Actually, we were going to give the update to the next Parks Committee meeting. There is no Parks Committee meeting in March because you're in, out of town. So it'll be in April.
Let's do that. Would the first meeting or the second meeting work?
We were gonna do the Parks, we could probably do, it depends on where it falls on the calendar, if Parks comes before or after the first council meeting.
What day's the first meeting, in April?
Parks is on the 8th. First meeting's on the 1st.
We gotta go second meeting.
Second meeting.
Second meeting in April.
Just a thought, if this is important enough to the council, why don't you skip the committee and have it at the council at the next meeting?
Council?
That's, that's fine. I mean, if you feel it should become a regular council meeting, that's okay with me.
Okay. As the chair of the committee, you're okay with that?
Yeah. Makes our Parks Committee meeting that much shorter.
Would it be okay if we negotiated the first meeting in April to give us time to prepare? We can probably put something together, but I think we can get a better comprehensive report for you if we had the month of March to help us get to the better number.
That'd be on the 1st of April?
Yeah, the 1st of April, the first meeting in April.
That ain't no joke. All right, all right, very good.
Thank you. We'll have one for you on the 1st of April, skipping Parks Committee and going directly to full council.
Very good, okay.
Thank you.
All right. Had to throw in a April 1 groaner in there, sorry about that. I got somebody who calls me up every year and tries to get me. It just never, never fails. So I don't know if you have people in your lives that try to, try to get you on April Fool's Day. Okay, that being said, have we, have we voted on H yet?
No.
Okay. There's, has there been a motion?
Yes.
Yes, there's been a motion, a second, a discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you very much. Good discussion. Okay, now, moving on to item eight, Council Business, Senior Advisory Committee. Okay, now, moving on to item eight, council business, senior advisory commission, senior advisory commission appointment alternate to voting. Councilmember Walsh?
I move the appointment of Amy Parker to the senior advisory commission as a voting member for a term to expire August 31, 2026.
Second.
There's been a motion, a second, is there any discussion?
Yes.
Councilor Honda?
Thank you. So, Commissioner Frank Fields has resigned from the commission, and I'd like to personally thank Frank for all of the work he did on the commission. And he's an amazing person, and I, I hope one day he comes back to the commission and continues his work as a commissioner. But good luck to Frank. Amy has been an alternate for a little while, and she's doing a lot of great work on the commission, so she'll be a, it'll be great to have her as a voting member.
I know, I'm going to miss Frank. You know, Frank is just really one of the great contributors, and every year in my office, he comes by with his calendar that he puts out, that he designs. And he was so proud of, of being a senior advisory commission member. And actually, even the calendar he puts out says that, says his title, and he had business cards, and he's just a real, such a character, such a good person.
And he, and he looks 10 years younger than what he is.
Exactly. He was a Metro bus driver for years.
He was one of the folks who convinced us to have a senior commission. He worked for a few years to convince us to do that.
Yeah, Amy will be a great addition to the commission. I know her well, and I've worked with her over the years, and she will be, she's a go-getter.
Oh, she is, she's doing a lot of work as it is right now.
All right, all right. It's, there's been a motion, a second, another great conversation, discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, congratulations to Amy Parker. All right, item nine, ordinances, second reading and enactment. Item A, Council Bill 899, ordinance, EZ Fiber Texas LLC franchise. Would the city clerk please read the ordinance title?
Council Bill 899, ordinance, EZ Fiber Texas LLC franchise. An ordinance of the City of Federal Way, Washington, granting EZ Fiber Texas LLC, a non-exclusive franchise, to occupy rights of way of the City of Federal Way, Washington, within the specified franchise area for the purposes of constructing, maintaining, operating, replacing, and repairing a telecommunications network within and throughout the City of Federal Way.
Okay, councilor Doby?
I move approval of the proposed ordinance.
All right, there's been a motion and a second, excuse me, is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion, a second, although, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The matter passes unanimously. Council reports, it's the first meeting of the month, we'll start with council, council position number one, council member Lydia Asafad Ossin.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'm sorry I couldn't join you guys today, but I'm glad I was able to participate and see you guys in a couple of days. Thank you.
All right, councilor McDaniel?
I got two parts. First one, I gotta talk about something, get it off my chest. When I started my career, I chose not to work with corporate America because of the way I thought they looked at employment. They looked at employment more as a number than actually as a person. I chose to work with small families, small businesses, because it was more of a tight-knit group. When I came to the city, this is the closest I get to corporate, and this is closest I'll ever get to corporate. I choose not to work with those kind of corporations for that purpose. When I got to council, I didn't realize how much staff would be of benefit to learning and educating me on stuff, and there's quite a few people on staff who have had to answer a lot of questions since I've been here. And it really sometimes irritates and bothers me that I know we're losing people that I think are high quality, and with that leaves knowledge, experience, and trust. And I just want to let the city know, because I have no say in it, that I want them to fight like hell for good people, to stick around as long as possible. It makes it easier for us up here, and the only people I think should be rotating out on a consistent basis are the people sitting up here. So, I, I know that it's not always easy to do or possible, but I wanted to make sure that was known. And I have three examples of that. I have a person ask me, if the day center services were taken out, what would be the options? The person I would usually ask is going to be leaving soon, so I almost feel like, why ask somebody who's not going to be able to answer my question in the future? I know there's a company who's offering, what is it, Life, Family Life Center, has a phenomenal location, and they're trying to get a bunch of businesses in there. They have the opportunity that our public market's looking for, they have a building. I don't have someone I could go take that to to get it out to the citizens right now. That's an open vacancy right now in the PAC. I bug Autumn a lot about the PAC. I want the PAC to work, but right now financially, it doesn't look good. I'm going to lose that asset, too.
Does she stay?
She is?
Autumn is staying.
Ah, she owes me something now. Okay, thank you. I'm glad to hear that one, so I get a win tonight, so thank you for the win.
You're, you're welcome.
The second part was actually on a positive note, so that's, that's my two cents on that part. The second one is, today I got to go read at the elementary school myself. I missed you by like 10 minutes or something like that. I got the other kindergarten group. And I read them a book called, I Love You Just Because. It was actually written by Catrice Dennis, which is a local resident, and the book only took about seven minutes to read. For the next 20 minutes, I filtered questions from kindergartners. The amount of them, they wanted to know what I did for a living, my job, my stress levels, anxiety, I mean, dude, they were asking things I never would have thought about. And it was a very interesting conversation. I'd love to extend a hand to those guys to see if any of those kids could ever come out, if we could ever open up the city to do walkthroughs or something. I know, I'll, I'll check with you later, but that's something that, after talking to them and listening to them, it's, it's something I definitely want to give back to them. They gave me a lot, and, like, I'm still blown away at how many times they asked me about my job. And, yeah, it was, it was an interesting conversation, but it was a lot of pleasure, and I'm not a public, I'm not a big fan of public reading, but it was something I talked to them about, and it was something we could get along with, and I really enjoyed it, it's probably one of my, my favorite things so far I've done as a council member. So, thank you.
Awesome, great job. Councilor Honda?
Well, guess what? The senior commission has a program to get more people into the schools to read on a regular basis. So, if you're interested in going on a regular basis, you can do that, and we can help you do that. It was, one of our senior commissioners thought that this would be a good deal because, you know, people who are retired have time on their hands and can go into the schools and, and read. It's been a little bit harder to start than was anticipated, but it's, it's a great program, and it is fun to go in the schools and interact with the kids, so. So, if anyone's interested, Amy, Glennon, and our office can help you get going, and we, the more the merrier. We would love, love to have more people wanting to do that. I would like more information about the bike trail that the folks came to talk about today. There is a trail around Panther Lake, and I ride my bike around there, ran into a snake last year and almost fell into the lake, but, yeah, that would have been, I would, I wouldn't have been found for years, you know? I would have been down there in the, all the trees and stuff with the ducks and the geese. But I don't know what, what it is where they're proposing to extend the trail. So, if you know.
We can get you some more information. It's still in development, but it's a really cool idea. We're very supportive, Parks Department's very supportive of it, and we'll get you a rough drawing and show you kind of what thoughts are going in.
Would it be snake-free?
I, I don't know, but we are wondering back here, is there any film of that near me?
Fortunately, there was a young couple that was ahead of me, and they heard me scream and saw me go over, and they were, well, the girl screamed, but the, the guy was helpful. And the snake ran away, he didn't get hurt. And then my, my last thing is, I'd like to thank council member Von Rockbier and the mayor for the Gold Star Monument. That was something that the Veterans Committee started working on in '22, and we worked up until '24, because I just, I looked at the minutes this, today. Jane Hughes and Monica McNeil are Gold Star Mothers, and they helped the committee, and amazing women who have, you know, such a, such a loss in their family, and they want to help other Gold Star parents around the state. So, if you're a Gold Star family, they're, they're able to help you. I can't remember who lives in Milton and who lives up in Edmonds, but they're local, and they're there to help families who, who have suffered a loss. So, thank you very much, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilor Han Tran has rejoined us via Zoom. Councilor Tran, would you like to give a report?
Mayor, I'm sorry I had to join you via Zoom. I am actually in the capital of Vietnam. It's about 7,200 miles away from Seattle. The internet here is not great. They keep dropping off multiple times, so most of the meeting, I had to turn off the video, so sorry about that. I actually don't have any report, just want to say that it's good to see everybody.
What time is it there?
It is, let me check.
Everybody's asleep.
It's actually almost noon over here.
Wow, wow, that crazy, just a, just a big world. All right, well, council member, thank you so much for being all the way, checking in and being part of this, all the way across on the other side of the world.
It's the next day.
Yeah, it's the next day.
Thank you.
You're in the future. Exactly. All right, tell us what happens, all right. Councilmember Walsh?
I was just thinking, with the council member Honda almost falling in the lake with the ducks and geese, I'll just say that that would have been really foul. With that said.
If it happens, I'm going to call you.
Tomorrow, I will be reading at the, at the school, at Camelot, and last year, I, I loved it, and I'm going to read the same book I read last year, Green Eggs and Ham.
Oh, that's great.
It is one of my favorite books, and we'll have a discussion on that just because you haven't tried something, doesn't necessarily mean it's not good.
That's right.
And so, to look, expand your horizons, not just with food, but with life experiences. So, anyway, with that, you know, I'm anxious to, to see a little more about the bike, Panther Lake, too, get some information there, and, and with Parks, the Parks, Parks Appreciation Day coming up in April, so make sure it's on your calendar, and that includes the people that are here on the dais.
Right.
And that is, that's all I have to say.
Very good, thank you. Councilmember Doby?
Yeah, I will say that Phil is a great bike technician. He's fixed my bike a couple times, once when I ran across the country, and once when I went down to Mexico, so if you're going to go long-term riding, go see him, he fixes bikes really well. I was thinking about our discussion at our retreat last week, or whatever it was. I happened to have a chance to go to Idaho and spend some time on the snow, and I stayed at a place on a lake that was six stories high, that had an amazing view of whatever that big lake in Sandpoint is. And on the bottom, they had kind of like a meeting center, and they had places to retreat. And then the top four floors were million-plus condos that people bought to live in or rent out or stay. And all I could think about was a heck of a way to develop Dumas Bay into something that's worth a lot of money that people would want to come to. I mean, this place had, I mean, I'll bring pictures in the brochure, but they were selling the, the apartments above the conference center for up to $4 million a copy for the view in Sandpoint, Idaho.
Wow.
So, anyway, you know, we talked about development and what it costs and how you do it, but they had, we were in building eight, and we would never have that much space, but they had a lot of condos that paid for a lot of a convention center and a retreat center, and had a brand-new kitchens and all sorts of things that, you know, we could dream about and think about in the future.
Wow, great thought, thank you.
So, I'll bring that and share it with everybody, but thank you all for tonight, and appreciated the meeting.
Thank you. With that, council president?
Well, I also read at Camelot, and I read to the fourth and fifth graders about a planet in a pickle jar, and it was about a grandma pickling pickles and putting planets in a pickle jar. Now, this book, you have to remember, if, they've got a grandma being little white-haired lady knitting, making pickles, literally. I don't know anybody who's, who even knows how to make pickles, but beyond that, that knits, and everybody my age goes to Chico's to shop, so not knitting, but I've got to change the perception of people around here, this is crazy. But if you want to have people come to City Hall, kids to, it's usually the fourth graders